Okay, good morning and welcome. My name is Edward Carney and I am the co-chair along with Sherri Levin-Wallack of the Advisory Committee tasked with identifying options on whether and to what extent the New York State Court of Appeals should adopt pre or post admissions requirements supplementing the Next Gen Bar Exam. This is the first of three public hearings. The next two are scheduled for May 20th from nine to one and June 9th from one to five. The purpose of this, of these hearings is to receive views from interested individuals, organizations, and law firms on possible options. The link is posted on the Court of Appeals website for members of the public who wish to watch these hearings. So please get the word out. Before we hear from Professor Hutter and the President of the New York State Bar Association, Dominic Napolitano, I'd like to introduce the members of the Advisory Committee. First, my co-chair, Sherri Levin-Wallack. Sherri is the Deputy Executive Director of Legal Aid Society of Westchester County and the 2223 President of the New York State Bar Association, which is the largest state voluntary bar association in the United States. She's a member of the New York State or New York Chief Administrative Judge Advisory Committee on Artificial Intelligence and New York Courts. We also have on the committee Judge, former Judge Kristen Booth Glenn. She's a former judge having served in the New York State Supreme Court appellate term, First Department, and Surrogates Court. She also has served as the Dean for the City University of New York School of Law. Next, we have Megan Chamberlain, Firmwide Director of Legal Recruiting at Kirtland and Ellis, where she has been there since January of 2020. Next, U S G Boyd Jr., Dean of Admissions and Financial Aid at Brooklyn Law School. Dean Boyd practiced commercial litigation in New York for closely, for close to 10 years. And last, we have Michael J. McNamara, Partner at Seward &amp; Kissel. Mr. McNamara is a Partner in the Litigation and Investigations Group. He is a past President of the New York County Lawyers Association and currently serves as a Director and a Member of its Executive Committee. He is also currently a Vice President of the New York State Bar Association, representing the First Judicial District, a member of the New York State Bar Association Executive Committee, and Chair of its Financial Committee. Our first individual testifying today is Professor Michael Hutter.
Good morning. Everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Initially, let me give you my background, which will serve as the basis for my comments. I'm a professor of law at Albany Law School. I just finished my 49th year teaching here. And 25 years of those have been teaching New York practice and the remaining years have been teaching a smattering of New York oriented courses. I've also been a practicing attorney, not on a full-time basis obviously, but over 54 years. And I started my career as the law clerk to the Honorable Matthew Jason, New York Court of Appeals for two years. Plus, over the last dozen years, I have delivered over 100 CLEs to judges, lawyers regarding updates where New York law is going, both procedurally, evidence law, as well as substantive. Now, with that background, my position is that I would urge this committee to recommend that the present method of examining law students, graduates on New York law be abandoned. And we go back to the system that we had 10 years ago, perhaps with some modifications, which I'll, I'll, I'll suggest. But the basis for this is my experience dealing with graduates of my law school, recent graduates, talking with alums who've been practicing out there. We have producing, and not just Albany Law School, but other law schools. We're producing too many graduates who know little, if not anything, about New York law. And this is critical. New York law is unique, not just in practice, but whether criminal procedure, trust in estates, business corporations. Without knowledge of New York law, it's, it's a trap for the un-
Professor Hutter, you've become, you're on mute.
I think we lost you there.
Okay.
Now you're back.
We can hear you now, thank you.
And what I was leading into is that, as I said, I think I got this before I hit mute, that we're producing too many students with minimal knowledge, if any, knowledge of New York law, with all its nuances, it's all its complexities. And more and more lawyers and clients are turning to New York lawyers for help. There's no, not a doubt, I mean, the Chief Judge has made the claim, and I believe the claim is supported, we are the capital, the financial, commercial capital of the world. And our law now is being used and choice of law clauses throughout the world. It's important that we produce students who know New York law. Now, in that respect, at least initially, I think that critically, what would be very important is a knowledge of New York practice. New York practice, the way it's set up now with the CPLR, the Uniform Trial Rules, Judges' Individual Rules, is a trap for the unwary. It's easy to make a mistake, lose a case to your client. There's got to be better knowledge of New York civil practice. Now, years ago, before the transformation in 2014, pretty much every New York law school offered courses in New York practice, and they were oversubscribed, mainly because they're examined on the bar exam. We produced numerous students who knew New York law, civil law. Once the bar exam changed, the statistics showed, there's a recent article in New York Bar Journal, it showed it plummeted, and our, our courses plummeted. Even the great Dave Siegel, he went from over 180 students to maybe 10. Why? Because they realized, well, we don't need it. New York practice is a hard course. Well, yes, it's hard course, but it's necessary. You have to have a component that examines rigorously New York practice. Now, in thinking about that, and I've seen some ideas floating around, perhaps this committee can recommend some sort of substitute. I think it's certainly within the powers of the Court of Appeals on recommendation by this committee to maybe say, yes, you need New York knowledge. That can be satisfied by a New York practice course, a legitimate New York practice course. You pass that, you don't have to be examined on it. That may be one way to go. And that may be very, very well accepted. Now, I know from my own experience, I went to law school, Boston College, and no idea what the CPLR was. And Matt Jason told me, I better learn New York practice. And what he recommended is the course that then Dean Jove McLaughlin from Fordham taught in Boston, six weeks, six Saturdays, in the spring, a complete immersion into New York practice. And it saved me, and I still have his notes, his, his book. This is what needs to be done. And I think the bar examiners, the board has done a good enough, good job as much as they can with our present test, but it's really superficial, and especially with the open book concept. And I think that New York Law, New York Bar Journal article show that, that it is really a very simple test, which anyone can pretty much pass. And I like to know what the, the actual pass failure rate is. I'm sure it's quite high, astronomically high. But one way of solving all that would be a New York practice course. Now, there are other areas, and again, I'm speaking outside my area of expertise, but certainly I know criminal procedure. Criminal procedure in New York is unique, especially our Court of Appeals has broken away from the Supreme Court in criminal procedure issues, constitutional. Students don't realize that. Commercial law, the UCC. New York was a pioneer in adopting the UCC, but through the years, it's adopted its own quirks, mainly to recognize and be responsive to New York commercial needs. Students don't realize that. Now, a lot of our professors, not all at Albany Law School, and I believe this is the same, I know at Fordham, we're very good friends with the former dean there, Mike Martin, the professors at Fordham and a lot of us at Albany, we will take our time in teaching a universal course, whether it's trust in estates, commercial law, to point out the New York differences. Now, is that satisfying? Again, if the student takes that course. But maybe the idea would be is a separate commercial law type of program. Now, some may say, well, can we get, can we gear up to that with an exam? The, I used to lecture for BarBry, doing the Evidence part, New York Evidence. That can clearly be, I'm sure, rebooted and to be adaptable in the, in the next couple of years. We're not going to be reinventing the wheel. But my whole point now here is, again, I know I'm being repetitive, but I am just so strongly imbued in this, we need a rigorous New York law exam. And again, I could probably name some other areas, but outside, I mentioned mainly UCC, trust in estates, business corporation law. But I think all of you would agree, and all of you have substantial practice experience, New York law is unique. Teaching a national course using a casebook which teaches national law, that's fine, but a lot of that is not transferable to New York. And the way you point that out is through a separate examination, a rigorous examination. So my pitch then is for this committee to really rethink the, and go back, not necessarily follow to a T, but to go back, think about, how do we now re-get a rigorous New York examination into play in order to make the practice of law for lawyers a little bit easier to understand, and then really make them practice ready? I think that's the key. Right now, most law school graduates are not practice ready in New York. Now, I mentioned New York practice, and one last thing, and I'll certainly take questions, I don't want to use up my, all my time. People say, well, who needs New York practice? I'm a transactional lawyer. But this is something that Professor Siegel, my colleague, current colleague, Pat Connors, we teach New York civil practice on the basis that, yes, you need it to be a litigator, but you also need it to be a transactional lawyer. You need to know how to design clauses to take advantage of the quirks in New York law. It is fundamental. And that's why I think I start with New York practice as a basic requirement for all law school graduate. I certainly, I'm getting close to my time, and I'll certainly respond to any question that you may have, but that's the extent really of my, what I wanted to get across to this committee.
I have a question, but I can't figure out how to raise my hand. Oh, here we go. So I apologize. Since no one else was speaking. And thank you so much, Professor Hutter, really for taking the time to be here with us and to share your views. It's important to us, obviously, that we hear as many views as possible from as many different aspects of, across the lines of practice, that, so that we can give, you know, a full recommendation and a full analysis to the court. My question for you is, if you had a suggestion on the manner in which you thought would be most effective to test everything you just said, right? So what manner, if someone were to ask you, would you recommend that testing take place?
Well, first of all, I would, I would really ask that maybe in lieu of testing, a demonstrated, the taking of a law school course dedicated to a specific New York law topic such as CPLR, barring that, I think the examination would have to be essentially what was done back post, or pre-2014, through a rigorous bar examination process. I know a lot of my colleagues, a lot of alums I know from those years, still have their bar review notes, because again, it's set it out so well. And I'm not sure any other way that can be done, other than a, a full immersion or these specific courses. Now, in that regard, the more I think about it, and again, I'm not just thinking on the fly, but I have thought about it with those courses. Again, it can be a two-credit course, three-credit course. We used to teach, Dave Siegel used to teach eight credits in New York practice. I mean, you knew New York practice when you taught Dave Siegel. We're now down to a six-credits course and then a three-credit course. It doesn't have to be all that thorough, but again, it's got to be meaningful, and that's the key. Now, maybe even what I did in, when I was in law school, maybe a separate five-hour course in these areas, certified, I took these courses. You know, students may not want to come in on a Saturday to sit through these less, these courses, but again, I don't think we have, I don't think we cater to students. And I think that was one of the mistakes that was made in 2014. We're more concerned about the students. And with Generation X, or I guess the Generation Z now, I think we have to really impose upon them what, and tell them what the practice of law is all about. It's hard. It takes a lot of work, and that hard work starts with the bar exam. Hopefully, that was responsive, Ms. Wallack, to your, your question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Professor. It's great to see you. I think, Mr. McNamara, you have a question for the professor?
Thanks that I do, and thank you, Professor, for being here and for your comments. I, I just want to follow up on, on the question that Sherri asked you. Do you think in terms of the exam, and I understand what you've said about the, the importance of a New York practice course, but in terms of an exam, would you favor an essay-based exam? Are you thinking it would be a closed book exam? I wonder what your thoughts are on that?
Well, certainly a closed book exam, I think it'd be a combination of essays and short answers. I think the, the way the bold bar exam used to be was a lot of short answers, and then you had your essay part, which had not just a CPLR issue, but also a substantive toward issue, a substantive T and E issue. I think that's the way to go. And I think in that respect, I think the committee is well aware that the Court of Appeals now is going to go to Next Gen. And the Next Gen is going to be geared, at least in large part to that, in a sense of, you'll get a, a problem, you get a set of facts, and the attorney, the law student is going to be asked, where do you go from here? Applying our broad knowledge and addressing, identifying a problem, sketching out your alternatives, I think that's what, it's, it's got to be done. Anything that this committee does has to be done in connection with Next Gen. I see Mr. Mc, Mr. McIlary is on, he may have some ideas about that, what the bar examiners are doing with respect to Next Gen. And I, I also should disclose that I am a consultant to Next Gen.
Thank you, Professor. Judge Glenn, did you have a question for the professor?
Yes, I did, sorry. Thank you, Professor Hutter. You are a legend in your own time. And I'm interested in your idea, because I think at the end of the day, what we really want is for people to know the area, not just to memorize things for a bar exam, which they forget immediately. So I'm wondering, with regard to the idea of taking a course in New York practice, I mean, you've, you've given this course many times, what, what kind of exam do you give, and do you think is the best way to test whether your students have actually absorbed and understand not only the principles, but how to apply them?
I, I give a combination of short essays and multiple choice, trying to cover all the broad areas, but it's all based upon a recognition that the students must have, that they recognize the problem. I mean, every, anyone can memorize a, a set of black letter law rules, but it's the idea now of recognizing the problem in which that black letter law can be applied and applied correctly or properly with the accompanying facts. That's what I try to do in my course. I know Pat Connors does that. We both learned from the master, Dave Siegel, in his course.
And Professor, does, and when you give the exam, do you have, do they have a copy of the CPLR, you know, somewhat of a, you know, not a total open book exam, but is, can they bring in the CPLR with them?
I, and I see, looks like you have behind you, Judge, the red book. I let them bring in the red book.
Right.
Because I don't want them memorizing. But I tell them, if you have to consult the red book during the exam, you're never going to finish in time. I use it as a, a comfort level. If you have that brain freeze, they can go to the book. But I know Professor Connors does not, not allow the red book to come in, nor did Professor Siegel. It's again, a matter of professorial, a choice.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions for the professor? Well, again, Professor, great to see you. We appreciate you taking your time to come here and testify, and I'm sure we'll see you in the future.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to, to address you. Good luck, and this is very important, and, and not going to say good luck, but best wishes, and it's very important endeavor that you're undertaking.
Okay, it looks like with the next individual that's going to testify is not until 11:00, so maybe we'll take a break till just maybe a few minutes before 11:00. How's that sound? Okay. I'll see you in a few.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we get started? At this time, we're going to hear from the New York State Bar Association President, Dominic Napolitano. Mr. Napolitano, we appreciate you being here today, and you can go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone. My name is Dominic Napolitano. I am the current president of the New York State Bar Association, and with me this morning is our General Counsel, David Miranda. We thank both the Advisory Committee and Chief Justice Rowan Wilson for this invitation for us to share NISP's views on proposed changes to the manner in which those seeking the honor and privilege of practicing law in the great state of New York are to be examined and tested. We applaud Chief Justice Wilson for his leadership in forming this advisory committee to examine whether or not our future testing of New York State bar admission is sufficient to test the skills and the ability of law school graduates to be ready to practice law here in New York. As you know, we oppose the use of the current UBE exam, and without any substantial and vigorous New York State bar examination challenges, we continue to oppose that. We support the premise that the current UBE exam is inadequate for the New York State, and we can improve it. Fifty questions on multiple choice, open book, New York law exam that accompanies the current UBA is neither substantial or vigorous and recognized, and is recognized as inadequate. Newly admitted attorneys in New York need to be ready to practice law, and in order to get there, the all-test models need to be challenged and improved. However, membership of the New York State Bar Association, the practicing attorneys in New York State, have very strong concerns about the Next Gen exam for New York. As it is currently configured and without any substantial or vigorous changes to that exam, it will not lead us in the right direction. It would clearly take us a step backwards. A license to practice law in New York is the gold standard for lawyers across the country, and I will add, across the world, but must not change or be tinkered with without long and careful deliberations. Or often or not, the laws of New York do not follow the uniform laws that either are the current UBE or the Next Gen test examples, where the New York law is, is special, unique, and sometimes frustrating. But the ability to understand and navigate the nuances, and may I add, the pitfalls of New York, is crucial to the ability to be able to practice competently in New York. New York, with its progressive laws, courts, and judges, is recognized as the leader in the legal community throughout our nation, and again, the world. Practicing here is special and unique, and very different from practicing in states such as Iowa and Nebraska, not to put down Iowa and Nebraska. Our bar exam should be, must be, I may add, properly reflective of the uniqueness or diversity and our influences throughout the world. Practicing in New York is different than any other place in the world. New York State is the opposite of uniform. What makes New York different is also what makes us sought after. Attorneys in other states and other countries want to practice here in New York as, as, as they also wish to practice in their home jurisdictions. But many who practice here in New York, it is their second most valuable asset. Every year, New York admits thousands of new attorneys from across every state in this union and across countries across the world. We have seen that the use of the UBE and laws and law schools are no longer attracting students to New York-centric courses such as civil practice, because it is not necessary to pass the New York State Bar Exam. When told that the Next Gen is better because it will increase the portability of New York licenses, we're concerned, because there is no outcry from our members about barriers to enter into other states, nor outcry from practicing attorneys here in New York, nor outcry from our clients, or the public, and no outcry from our courts, that they wish more out-of-state attorneys could practice here. If it is the attorneys in other states who will more easily flood the New York legal community without an understanding of New York law and dilutes the significance of the license to practice here in New York. Law firms and employers in New York want attorneys steeped in the complicated nuances of New York practice. Clients in New York, whether rich or poor, need their attorneys to be fully versed in New York law. Our bar exam is the gatekeeper to protect the public we are privileged to serve. The proposed configuration of the Next Gen will be a step backwards if it does not include a substantial and vigorous examination of New York laws. It is important to keep in mind that the purpose of the bar exam is to determine whether law school graduates has mastered the legal skills and general knowledge that a practicing attorney should have. This means a firm grasp of black letter law and a solid grounding in the basic analytical reading and writing skills. Writing a well-constructed legal essay is a learned way, and a learned skill, rather, that requires mastery of the law and the nature of, of the logistic argument. A license process, the licensing process that fails to assess the candidate's ability to write, analyze, and reason logically about the law of the licensing state is inadequate to achieve its objective. That is what licensing exams for the practice law must be designed to do. When a candidate has mastered, mastered, rather, the basic legal analysis and understanding of the law, then the bar exam is not the barrier to the profession, but a threshold requirement to enter the profession, and it must be no other way. When the Court of Appeals Chief Justice Jonathan Littman announced in 2015 that the state would adopt a two-day uniform bar exam, he also declared that New York, that the new law day of the bar exam would be a separate test for New York. That promise, we thought, would be rigorous, but it was not. And it would provide comprehensive testing of knowledge of New York, but it did not. Nor did it preserve the reputation among states that the bar exam here in New York is the gold standard for admission. The Courts Advisory Committee on the Uniform Bar Exam, which has spearheaded a statewide effort to gather commitment from members of the bar bench and the legal, and the legal community about the court's plan to revise the bar exam, reported that a recurring theme at newly, at nearly every bar public hearing was concerned about the potential negative effects on both the, the teaching and the ability of New York to practice here. No longer does New York Law Day, New York Day, rather, essay questions include such commentary. Commissions argued that the absence of such easy questions to the exam would not, would not be a, a stopgap, but the ability to spot and analyze the state law issues that might encounter when asked to solve a problem that their New York clients would have, and assessing what it is that they need would be the solution. The recurring concerns that the New York attorney competence of New York law has proven to be well-founded, and a promise of the gold standard for mission of New York has yet to be kept. This court has the opportunity to commission a careful study of the New York law exam, with a view towards correcting the high, the high sides, the hindsight, I'm sorry. the hindsight, I'm sorry, that shows an unintended negative consequence of the state's eight-year experiment with the uniform bar exam. In twenty fif, in twenty twenty-five, in February of this year, a letter to Chief Judge Wilson comment, commended him for the formation of the advisory committee. We called upon him to, to engage in a psychometric to advise this advisory committee on the type of New York exam that we wish to recommend. When the New York State bar examination, when the New York State bar examined the study of the courts in, in nineteen ninety-two, the court engaged three independent professional psychometrics under the chairmanship of Cornell University President John Millman to evaluate the, the viability and reliability and disparaging impact of New York law component of a two-day bar exam given at that time, as well as assess procedures for accommodating test takers with disabilities, ensuring security of exam answers, grading exams, setting up cut scores, and handling appeals for failing souls. The Millman Report, which was issued in, in May of nineteen ninety-three and covers several hundred pages, indicates that the Millman team used panels of practicing lawyers to gather data about exam questions, validity and question sensitivity, interviewed bar law examiners professionally, professionals extensively about their procedure for granting accommodations, retaining and training grades, and scoring the exam, and analyzed substantial amounts of data from the DOLE files. In the executive summary of the report, the Millman team concluded that the, the validity, reliability, lack of bias, and other aspects of the New York State bar exam as its implementation surpasses acceptable levels. Notably, the high grade was awarded to the full-day New York law exam when Chief Judge Littman replaced it with the current UBE. Law much criticized two-hour online open book, New York's, New York law exam. The decision was made in twenty fifteen without undertaking the extensive professional psychometric study conducted by this court in nineteen ninety-three. This advisory committee has the opportunity to correct the glaring omission by retaining appropriate professional psychometrics to design and conduct an evaluation of the bar exam options. Please tell me, has the advisory committee recommendation recommended the retention of the psychometrics to add, to advise in proper method of examining, and if so, have they recommended, and if not, why not? We agree that New York should be, should embark upon creating an exam that was graded than the current model. A bar exam that truly tests the ability to practice law in New York and keeps New York licenses the gold standard for lawyers. We submit the implementation of the Next Gen exam without a substantial and vigorous examination of New York law does not lead us in the right direction. We ask Chief, the Chief Judge and this advisory committee not to be unnecessarily harsh in its decision or nor hasty. To date, we have seen scant proof regarding the potential disparate impact of this new exam. It is not sufficient to say, let's try for a few years and see what happens. Without further study, we may well be disenfranchised in important groups of people from the privilege to practice law in New York. And it is a privilege and a responsibility that New York and some other entities must be concerned with. The New York, New York State must be diligent in providing an examination that fully tests knowledge of New York law and skills necessary to practice in New York. The current exam does not give us that, and the proposed Next Gen does not give us that either. We are confident that with the leadership of Chief Judge Wilson and the dedication of this advisory committee, working together with the organized bar and the greater New York, and greater New York law schools of this state, we will be, we will do better. The New York Bar Association stands ready to work with you to ensure the New York State and the bar exam remains the gold standard for practicing law here in New York. On behalf of the New York State Bar Association, I thank Chief Judge Wilson and esteemed advisory committee for starting this, this uh, this advisory committee to study the new, the new uh, bar exam. I will take any questions, but I do have a comment if I may. I have been practicing for forty-five years. I graduated from Hofstra Law School in nineteen eighty, and when I took the bar exam in nineteen eighty, clearly was nowhere close to what it is today. Fifty multiple choice questions, six essays, multi-state one day, two hundred questions, and we were done. Since I have been practicing, and I practice every day, I'm actually late for court this morning, but I made the arrangements yesterday with the presiding judge uh, that I would be late. But that being said, I recently had a trial with my adversary, not a newly licensed lawyer, but someone who's been out maybe anywhere between five and ten years. And it took us, or rather him, two full days to even try to get a document into evidence. Just didn't know how. Had no idea. The judge at one point paused the trial and said, counsel, do you wish to have a continuance? Because if you do, I'll grant you one. And he looked to me and said, would you have any objection? I said, no, clearly I would not. And he took us both back into his robe room and said to my adversary, I would suggest that you go back to your office and speak to one of the senior partners about the issues that you're having with this document. So it was a subtle hint to him to get some education on how to put a document into evidence. And so we came back a few days later, and my adversary once again tried to put the document in. And we had the same results. Couldn't do it. And so the judge again took us in the back and said to him, did you utilize the time that I gave you constructively? And he answered by saying, yes, he did. And then the judge looked to me and said, will you have any objection to this document going in? Now, I knew at that point that the judge did not want to spend another full day wasting time. And to the extent that the document really did not hurt me tremendously by it going in, I agreed that it would, and it did. But that's only one example of what I've personally experienced with lawyers who come out of law school, have taken the UBE, and perhaps now what the Next Gen will look like without there being any vigorous testing on New York law, and specifically in this instance, on New York practice. This isn't something that you can learn by taking a CLE class after graduation. This is something that the law schools simply are not teaching any longer, as I said in my statement, simply because it's not being tested upon. And that's a problem, in my opinion, because the ones who are suffering most, or potentially will suffer the most, are the clients. And we can't lose focus of who they are. The public is who we serve, and the public is who will be harmed by these types of situations. So I strongly urge that this commission take that into consideration, and I'm telling, this is not an isolated incident. I mean, I've heard this from other colleagues where they have had these issues with lawyers who simply don't get it. You know, and I give you another example. You know, we had a meeting of the deans a few months back. And without mentioning which school dean said what I'm about to say, it really took me by surprise. So the gentleman said, well, Mr. Napolitano, as lawyers, don't we spend some of our time researching the issues that we're faced with? And I said, absolutely, I do that all the time. If I, even if I know something, I want to make sure that what I know is still what I know, and it hasn't changed. He said, well, if a client comes in with a problem, then clearly the attorney will have the ability to research that problem. And so I said to him, well, let me see if I understand what you're suggesting. I have a client who comes into my office and sits across my desk and tells me his or her problem. Should I say to that individual, could you please wait in my waiting room while I go on Westus, you know, Westlaw or Nexus Lexus to figure out how I'm going to handle your problem? Should I not have at least some basic understanding of what it is that you've come in with as far as this problem is concerned? Well, obviously, I didn't get an, an intelligent answer to that question, other than the person saying, or rather insisting that it's the way it should be, because there's no harm there, but there is. And lastly, if I may, and I know I'm taking time more than I should, I'm concerned, and I've said this repeatedly to people, I'm concerned about a newly minted lawyer who can't find the job in a firm and decides because he or she has a debt that they still have to pay, and they hang out a shingle. And they go into court, and they commit malpractice to a client, and they don't have the ability to pay for malpractice insurance. So not only will they be sued potentially for the harm that they've caused, but sometimes they may find themselves cutting corners, ethically cutting corners, and finding themselves in jeopardy before grievance committee, which I had the, the privilege of serving on some years ago. So again, I apologize for taking more time than I was allotted, uh, but again, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Napolitano. Are there any questions from the committee members?
Um, yeah, I have the, the same question I asked earlier. Um, thanks, Dominic, for that really comprehensive statement and for, you know, all the important thought that goes into it. Um, I asked the same question. Um, and I'd love to know what your suggestion would be, um, or the state bar, I should say, suggestion would be, uh, for the structure of a New York bar exam, meaning if, you know, your recommendation or the state bar's recommendation. So would it be essays, multiple choice, a law course, a combination of that, a CLE, you know, we're, we're looking at everything and, and would love to know what your thoughts are.
So my own prejudice, jury, would be to go back to the way things were. I know that'll never happen. But at a minimum, I think that a, at a minimum, a half-day of essays on New York practice. I think the component of testing New York law and the writing component ability that goes with that, I think, could take care of two major issues. The one more specific is that we're testing New York law for New York practicing lawyers. Because if they are going to come out, as I said, and be in front of a judge, they need to know how to do what they're supposed to do. There's no time to research when you're on trial. And even in the instance that I gave you, you know, when the judge says to my adversary, I'll grant you the continuance, not that he was asking for one, I'll grant it to you. And now take that time and go back and figure out how you're supposed to do this. And even after he went, he came back and we were still, you know, stuck in the same place, that it's embarrassing. I mean, I was more embarrassed for him than I was for anyone else that day. Uh, so my suggestion or recommendation would be a half-day rigorous exam on New York law, six, three or four essays, but a writing essay.
And would you recommend open book, not open book?
No, I know, open book is a joke. I mean, seriously, no, no, that, that's no. I mean, who can't pass an open book exam? I mean, I've seen there are tabs. These students put tabs all over the place. All they have to do is just flip to the tab. No, it shouldn't be open book. It should be based on their studying and comprehens, comprehension of the issue, and they should be able to write with, on it without the need of, you know, outside sources of materials.
Thank you. Uh, Dean Boyd, did you have a question?
Yes, I have two questions. Um, first, thank you for being with us today. Um, I, I wonder if you've given some thought to what we've come to learn about the amount of material that most people forget after they prepare for the bar. It, it's so, the concerns you're raising, I share. You know, certainly, um, nobody wants to retain an incompetent lawyer, nobody wants to hire an incompetent lawyer. Um, and in your role, I'm sure you want to make sure that we protect both the public and the profession from them. The question that I have is whether the exam, um, is capable of solving these problems, you know, whether really any exam, but specifically, um, you know, something like what we just described, you know, a, a half-day rigorous New York exam, followed by, you know, the memory drop-off that happens seventy, you know, seventy-five percent of which you forget that material maybe a week later, maybe a month later, maybe a year later. Um, you know, that's really my quick issues. I, you know, I practiced from ninety-six to two thousand and five. I took the old bar exam. Um, I also ran into incompetent opposing counsel um, who had taken that same exam. I, you know, I, I, I don't know that the exam um, is, is going to protect people from that. And I wonder if, in a world where the day after they take this exam, they could just, you know, probably within a year, be able to ask ChatGPT a lot of the questions. You know, is there anything about the time from, you know, twenty fourteen to now, changes in legal tech, changes in the, the availability of information that alters your, your view at all about the, you know, whether a memorization exam, even if it's, you know, coupled with skills, um, you know, really solves this problem. You know, I, I understand that there's a frustration with the New York State Bar Association about the Next Gen, and is the problem really with Next Gen, or is, you know, as a, as a test, or is the problem really with the New York component? You know, if that, if those questions make any sense.
So I, I'm going to answer you by first saying that when I took the bar exam in nineteen eighty, uh, obviously, I'm dating myself, but that being said, uh, I took the Peper Bar Exam Bar Review Course. And I could tell you that to this day, I still remember the, the mnemonics that I was taught, to this day. Uh, forty-five years ago, forty-six years, or whatever it's been, but I still remember those mnemonics, and those mnemonics are the foundation for, at least when Peper gave this course, for the CPLR. So look, there are some people that will walk out of that exam, and as you mentioned, you know, maybe immediately or within a year, you know, forget everything that they memorized and studied for the taking of the bar exam. I get it. But there are those who don't. And I think that we need to, you know, balance against those who do forget and what that means to them against what it means to the entire community that we're here to protect and serve for those individuals who do retain it and do understand that this is important in order to be able to practice law. So do I have a problem with the entire Next Gen? No, I think that the evolution of the exam had to take place, and that's why we are where we are. I get it, all right? But I don't think that it's beneficial to simply scrap a New York component when you're practicing here in New York. If you don't know the law of the state in which you are going to spend the rest of your life potentially, right? Then I think you better know what you're here to practice. I mean, you can take, you know, with the portability aspect of it, we, we had a study done at, at the New York State Bars, uh, Association, not too long ago. Dave Marshall, who, in my opinion, is brilliant, uh, teaches at, at St. John's, right, part-time. But in my opinion, I think David Marshall is absolutely brilliant. They did a study. The portability, the percentage of those who, who take the, uh, UBE and take it elsewhere is less than three percent. Less than three percent. So what is the value of the portability aspect of the UBE, which is going to continue with the Next Gen, if it's not being used? People who either come to it to the state and take the exam stay here, and especially those who are in school here, for the most part, a good for the most part, a good three quarters of them, from what that study showed, continue to stay and practice here in New York. So again, look, I, as I said, I get it. There had to have been a change. I don't say that a change is not good. But I think that when you scrapped the entire, you know, New York State component, New York State practice component out of it, I think that is devastatingly bad. So yes, there's, you know, Chat G T P, there's A I. I mean, I subscribe to it. I don't use it all the time, but if I find myself in a jam, you know, I'll use it. But that's not my primary source, you know, where I go to. You know, I'll call other lawyers. I do that all the time, even after practicing forty-five years. I'll call my colleagues, you know, and I'll say to them, I have this issue. What do you guys think? And I get direction there. So you have to be able to know what you're doing. You know, you have to know what New York law is. You need to know the C P L R. You can't walk into court without knowing it. I'm sorry. And, and schools aren't testing it. You know, it's no longer a mandatory course. It's an option, and nobody's taking the option because they're not testing it on the exam. So what's the benefit? So I, I don't know if I answered your question, Professor. I hope.
But you did, you did. I, I mean, I don't, I take, again, I take no issue with the concerns that you have. It's more my lack of, of, of belief that the, that, that the, the exam will solve those problems. It's not that I don't think they're problems. It's just, I, I'm very skeptical that the exam solves the problem. Um, you know, the other kind of, uh, you know, question I had is, it, it's not really, um, a big part of, I, I think your position, you know, certainly in your written materials, is about New York being the gold standard of practice. And, um, I'm, is that a, a sort of a commercial benefit? Like, i- is it important? Is it important to us? Should it be important to us that New York is sending a signal that it is more difficult to be a New York lawyer than it is to be, say, an Illinois lawyer or a Massachusetts lawyer or a Nebraska lawyer? You, you understand what I'm saying? Like, I, is that a, is that an intrinsically valuable quality that we should be considering as we make a recommendation? Uh, uh, cause I'm, you know, I, I, I have to say that I am concerned about gatekeeping. You know, I think not all gates are bad, but, um, I have a sort of heightened sense of scrutiny of measures that will create barriers to entry to the profession relative to the value that they're creating, right? So if something has, is really creating tremendous value for us, I would understand creating a barrier, and people just have to overcome that barrier. And I, uh, I think that there's tremendous sort of rhetorical power in the argument that New York is a gold standard practice jurisdiction. The lawyers here are excellent. I had, remember many wonderful colleagues, everybody in the calls extraordinary, I'm sure. But I'm concerned that in our need to reflect, you know, this general excellence and prestige about New York lawyers, that we would use that as a, as a reason to create a higher barrier to entry, whether or not it really has value. Now, if we think it really does have value, that's, you know, I think that's different. I mean, I, um, but the idea that so that New York can be considered a more challenging jurisdiction to become barred is not to, to me, a good enough reason. And, and I just wanna, um, because you talk about that as, and it seems like it's an area of real pride for you, and I understand that, and, and, and your role as the president of the New York Bar Association especially, I would expect that, but I wanted to get your, your thoughts.
Well, I guess I can ask the question back to you, if you don't mind. What was wrong with the way things were in terms of considering New York to be the gold standard for the most competent of lawyers to be able to practice here in New York? When, when, no, I, I know, I know you're not, but I'm just saying, you know, for all of those many years before things changed, right? No one ever questioned or, and I use this word loosely, or criticized how things were done in the state, right? In terms of the way people were tested, the, the way people in law schools were vigorously challenged to be able to know what it was that they were gonna come out to society to do, which is to practice law, right? To be true to themselves first and foremost, to be true to their clients, to be true to the bar, right? So that when you're in front of a judge, you're not making a mockery of yourself and what it is that you're there to do. I don't know when that whole mindset changed or why it changed. So I'm not suggesting that, you know, we exclude people. I'm just saying that there's nothing wrong with saying that we want to be the best of the best. I think we should take pride in saying that we want to be the best of the best. I mean, California, you saw what's going on there, right? Florida, I heard that they have a pretty vigorous exam to be able to practice law in Florida. You know, some of the people that I know have moved to Florida, they've had to sit and take that bar exam, right? Cause they have summer homes there. Now they're, they're permanent homes, right? I mean, there's nothing wrong with saying that we should be the best of the best. I think we should take pride to say that we are and not deviate from that. So I, I, I don't quite understand why it should be a negative to say that we are the gold standard, or should rather be the gold standard for the way things are done here in New York. I think that we should take pride in saying that a, and not, you know, not put ourselves down for being that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Judge Glenn, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm always trying to find the unmute. Uh, thank you, President Napolitano. And, uh, I, I'm interested, and I, and I certainly resonate with, you know, as, as a person who was a judge for twenty-five years, um, the problems of people coming into the courtroom who have no idea of what they're doing, um, and, and wanting to remedy that. And I'm wondering whether you believe or would agree that whatever we could do on a half-day test, no matter how rigorous it might be, that taking a, a good law school course in New York practice would be better insurance for the, um, for the newly admitted attorney to practice law in a way that is effective for their clients and, and also not horrifying for, for the courts, number one. And, and, and that in the context of the possibility of not necessarily requiring everyone to take a course, a law school course in New York practice. But if they do, then excusing them from the testing, because presumably the testing that they got as a result of taking a full semester course in New York practice is going to be at least as rigorous as what they would get on the bar exam. And then just as a humorous aside, which you need not mention, which you need not answer, um, I was teaching at Hofstra while you were a student. I was wondering whether you were my student.
Uh, well, uh, truth be told, uh, Professor, yes, I was. Uh, so full disclosure, yes, you were my law school professor at Hofstra. Uh, you taught family law one year, and I was in your family law class. I don't recall what grade you gave me.
I'm sure it was very high. I'm sure.
It was. But yes, I, I do recall, uh, you being my professor. Uh, and it's good to see you, uh, after all these many years. But to answer your question, I think that testing on the bar exam, a written essay exam on New York law, I think is absolutely critical. Uh, it tests, in my opinion, two things. One, a person's ability to write cohesively and intelligently uh, on an issue, to spot the issue, to be able to write it, uh, on it, rather. I think it's important. Um, so I would say that a half-day essay exam on New York law is critical. Uh, I think it has to be brought back. Uh, I also think that yes, law schools should now, should make C P L R a mandatory course. Absolutely. I think it should be maybe in the second year, not necessarily the first or even the third. But I think it should be a course that law schools, you know, mandate that every student take. But I don't think that it would be enough to simply excuse them from taking that component part of the state of the, of the bar exam, simply because they took that course. I think you know as well as I, being a professor for as many years as you were, and the dean for as many years as you were, that sometimes people can pass an exam without being present in the class uh, and simply learning, you know, what it takes to pass an exam. Uh, so if they take the class, they pass the class. If you're saying that by virtue of that and that alone, they shouldn't have to sit that half-day component part of the New York State Bar Exam, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that.
Uh, so the reason I asked you whether you were my student, be- besides the fact that I sort of remember that you were, um, was, was just thinking about the value of a, a law school course and the way the knowledge that is hopefully obtained in that course is tested. Um, and the, and the greater amount of time, obviously, that's put into that particular subject over a semester. Um, the amount of time that's put into constructing and then grading that exam. Um, I was sort of hoping that you were actually my criminal procedure, uh, student, because Marina Angel and I used to spend uh, days constructing our exams and then reading every one of them three times over. And, and just whether, and maybe family law is not a good example, but whether you felt at the end of my course or, or any course that you took at Hofstra, where you took an exam, whether there was a midterm and a final or just a final, um, that you, that you knew as much about that subject as you would, or, or hopefully more than studying for a half-day, that subject among others on a half-day written bar exam.
I think both. First, I took, uh, Professor Kessler was my criminal law professor, God rest his soul. Uh, I don't know if you knew he passed a few years back. Uh, but, but, look, I, did I learn more than I, I learned what I needed to learn in your class, that's for sure. Uh, did I walk out of that knowing, thinking that I knew everything about it? No. Uh, abs- absolutely not. But that's no slight to you. I mean, it wasn't because of, you know, the teaching that you gave. It was more that there wasn't enough time to know everything, because no one can know everything. Uh, so, but you certainly gave me the fundamental principles to be able to go forward. Uh, if I, if I had a client who came and sat across the desk for me and presented a family law question, you know, whether it be custody, visitation, child support, whatever it may be, I certainly would have, you know, the tools with which to sit and intelligently discuss what that person's options were and how to proceed, guaranteed, without a doubt. But did I know every nuance? No.
O- of course not. And, and thank you. That, that's very kind and gracious of you. But, but my, my point is if you had not, for example, taken family law or any other particular course that, that's tested, that was tested on the New York bar exam, would you, do you think you'd know more by studying about it for the bar exam, even through Peper or whoever, whatever the other, uh, bar courses were at that time, than spending a semester, you know, thinking about it in a, in a broader way and, and maybe perhaps getting a better uh, sense of how to issue spot at the very least and where to find answers?
Maybe not more, maybe not more, but I think that the, the, you know, the bar review class, whatever it may be, as you said, bar breed, people, whomever, would certainly give me, I think, a supplement to what I learned. All right? So it would supplement it. It wouldn't stand alone and tell me everything that I needed to know in order to pass that aspect of the bar exam. But it would supplement it. So if I took, you know, a C P L R class and the bar exam was testing me on, you know, an evidence question, right? Then clearly I think that I would have by the combination of both having taken the course, you're at school, and having taken the bar review class, the two combined, I think, would give me not only enough to be able to pass that aspect of the bar exam, but it would carry forward to my ability to practice law. That's where I think we're lacking, because we're not testing on it and we're not teaching on it. And I think the two have to be combined back in order to give us competent lawyers to practice here in New York.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor.
Any other questions from the committee members to, for the president? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And thank you to the committee.
Your time and efforts, President Napolitano. And, um, this concludes our public hearing for today. I remind the public and anyone that wants to testify that our next, we have two more public hearings. One is on May twentieth, between the hours of nine and one, and the other is June ninth, between one and five. Sherry, anything you'd like to add before we end today's session?
No, thank you very much for taking the time, everybody, for joining us today. Appreciate it. And it's, we've learned a lot. So thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay. Everybody have a good afternoon.
Likewise. Thank you, sir.
Bye-bye.